If he was terminated within that term, is he, is he to be paid out the remainder of his term as well?
He's been unemployed.
Can that be added into the ordinance?
It could be, but I mean it's, it's, if that's your budget.
Yes.
But, but we didn't.
Because, because I just, I feel that, that it needs to be, just like a, a contract.
Okay.
For it to be.
Fine.
So it could be fine, somebody said in the audience, that's fine. And you could easily add that, um, at several places.
Have the other side seen anything with that?
One other thing. And since he's considered part-time?
As of, as of right now.
Right.
There may be a recommendation at some later date for there to be more time. But as of right now, I believe that this.
So what is, what is the requirement, what are we saying part-time is?
Probably is a practical matter, once or twice a month, conducting, um, his docket call. Uh, he did a docket call yesterday, uh, in an effort to try and stay up, keep up with Copsync. Um, and the prosecutor's here tonight, I'm assuming the judge is here tonight, but it was a pretty full day, a pretty successful day. And I think they're anticipating at least once a month, not twice a month.
Okay, so can, can we in turn put that in the compensation? Because part-time is no more than, what, thirty hours?
We're not, we're defining part-time as what the, what the magistrate or the, in this case, municipal judge may determine necessary to get his docket handled.
But there's also not a minimum to say that he can, I mean, part-time can be two hours a week.
It could be, if he can get his docket handled that quickly, it could be.
But at the same time, there was.
I think originally when Sheila was working, she was set at a full-time status of eight hours. And when we voted on this, we said we'd be part-time, so we have half the salary, which you're going to get twenty hours.
Well, I tried, I tried to disconnect this, and I'd be very blunt about it. I tried to disconnect this from the idea that the judge has to serve so many hours. And part of that was, we had a meeting between the chief of police, between the municipal judge, between the clerk, and between your prosecutor on Monday to kind of review all the issues, look at what the backlog was and all of that, and try and anticipate what was going to be required yesterday, and hope it be anticipated in the future, what Copsync is producing for paperwork, what the warrant program is going to require, and to try and anticipate what you may have with building code enforcement coming up, which we've not done a lot of. Okay? And so, we were anticipating at this point that part-time was appropriate. Let me say why part-time seems appropriate, and there are other people in the audience, the prosecutor, or the judge, who want to speak to this, are more than welcome to. But typically, at municipal court, you're going to get five percent or less of the cases tried. Most people are going to call in and say, I was doing fifty-five in a forty, what is your penalty for that? And then you're going to have to find out if they're eligible for, for deferred adjudication. If they're eligible for deferred adjudication, most people are going to request that. That's all a paperwork transaction, it does not require anything that the judge has approved. So until we got down the road further, we thought part-time would be left, where if the judge can do it, once a month, three a month, that's sufficient to meet the requirements of, do you have any effective law enforcement? As you increase your code enforcement, probably one time a month, if not only sufficient, you're going to need a day for code enforcement. You might even need more of a day for code enforcement, depending on how much your, your code processors are getting as defense complete, and how your cases go down. But Mr. Evans is here, this evening, behind me someplace. Uh, he can speak to the ones, the ones that he did prosecute yesterday, but I think it was a pretty successful prosecution, and it was free, it was a day-long deal, but I don't know if it'd be anticipated to bring new warrants required, so if you want to speak to this, we do.
Yesterday, we started about, well, I got there at eight o'clock, and we started right around nine, maybe a little bit later. And the Fendex came in, Manoa had them sign in, and we arranged their cases by, by priority of first on, first served, first in, first out. And we took their cases one at a time. We had two trials. We worked through and, and got all of the ones who decided they wanted to either plead or have a trial later taken care of. And when that was done, we conducted a, after lunch, we conducted a, uh, trial, and, before the court, and that was completed successfully with one law enforcement officer witnessing, uh, two store employees, and it went smoothly, and took about forty-five minutes, more or less, I, I didn't time it, when you're under pressure to trial, time is irrelevant. But that was completed successfully, and, and, uh, I'm not going to tell you what the verdict is unless you want to know later. But, uh, the next case that we did in the afternoon was a juvenile case, and it was a short hearing, but it went successfully. So there was a little friction between the, the child and the parent, and we resolved that pretty successfully. Uh, and then we went before the court, he conducted a very smooth hearing, and got it taken care of, and I think we, uh, ended up taking, uh, issuing warrants on probably four or five, maybe six, uh, people that didn't show up. And, and our court clerk stayed until after five to get those wrapped up and taken care of, and finished that this morning. And I think overall, it was a fairly successful day. But, leading up to that day, required a lot of individual legwork on behalf of the court clerk, the judge, myself, and law enforcement officers, and witnesses, and other things that had to come together to make it a successful day. Thank you. Any questions?
What time did you date him?
What?
What time did you date him, Mr.?
What time did I do what?
And you're dating him.
Oh, five fifteen was when I went. Uh, Brandy was still working at five fifteen, the judge was still there.
I think maybe the pertinent question is the counsel, how many times a month can you expect you'll have to ask for it?
Right now, it's scheduled for one a month, and I think it's going to work its way up to, at some point, at least two a month, and that may even increase. I don't know, it just, y'all have not done this before, this is, this is, we're crawling right now. And at some point, we're going to be walking and then running.
So I anticipate.
Say again?
What have you not done?
I've conducted hearings, hearings and trials in this fashion, and, uh, we're going to have some jury trials down the road, because we dealt with that question too. So, and that's something new for, for, I believe, you know, I haven't been here historically since the beginning of time, however, I have the impression that that's a recent innovation, and I think it's going to be successful personally.
Mr. Rosenberg, I do not think that being hours is relevant, because it's going to get paid a certain amount of money, as long as the job gets done. But if they work forty hours or twenty hours, they're not going to get paid more.
Can you justify working two days and still getting two thousand dollars a month?
Why not, if they have to work forty hours and not get paid?
But there still has to be.
I mean, there, there is work to be done, really.
Oh, I, I understand.
Yeah, gentlemen, we were paying someone forty-eight thousand dollars, and Kelly Danner even did this, I mean, for the last, you know, for the last twenty years that she was the judge, I mean, she was even employee of the year last year, wow.
Well, and that's.
I'm not saying that none of this has ever been done.
And, and that's what I'm saying, you know, we, we still need to, to set up the foundation of, of the timeframe of the minimum of part-time, of twenty hours a week. You know, that, that's, I, I think it's, it's a.
I don't think that's relevant, I mean, whatever time it takes to get the job done, that's what they're going to do.
Well, if, if he.
I think it'll probably be more than twenty, because we put ourselves in a bad spot, we're going to start market management, yeah, market managing his time, yeah. I mean, I think he's just going to be shown a court put on his road, and then, and then he'll leave at the end of the day, and not touching anything, like you said, it takes some time building up to that.
But there is reversal, but there's still nothing to, to hold him down contractually by time, you know? He, heck, he could have been, uh, leaving eight hundred warrants unfulfilled.
I think this ordinance is fine as it is, without, I wouldn't change anything about it.
Well, I have one recommendation to add to the matter, and I should put this in the memo to all of you at the council. I reported on the Monday meeting we had, and at the end of it, I recommended, quote, "I recommend that any issues that require counsel's attention be rather due judge and menace." And I think he should be the one looking at the overall, are they current, and how are they proceeding, do they need additional staffing, do they need additional judge? Remember the one time we talked about another part-time judge, if you're proud or contemplate that possibility?
And then, but at the same time, it still needs to be defined, you know, even if we hired, hired on another part-time judge, twenty and twenty, how are they going to define their, their, their time?
Right, but we're not there yet, so what I'm asking.
They would need to put it on there, just to cover the, just to cover the city.
I think that's a different issue, I mean, everybody should go to the right now.
Yeah, and, and.
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion, instead of getting wrapped around the hours, you're talking about, uh, getting the job done?
Correct.
Okay, can you put in there specifics that constitute successful completion and getting the job done?
So it's keeping the, keeping the docket current.
Correct, I mean, I, I just heard the mayor talk about six hundred outstanding warrants, or something to that effect. Obviously, that's not getting the job done. So if we put in there, what are the, the metrics, or what constitutes success, then the hours don't matter, then we're, we're satisfying the need of the city, regardless of it's one court date a month, or twenty court dates a month, you know? The, the ordinance specifies what constitutes success. The second piece I would add into that, uh, is currently, the municipal judge only reports to the council. Uh, there's got to be some way of measuring that other than a monthly report to the council. Uh, and can that report go through the city manager or some other process to ensure that it gets done? I think those two, two issues need to be addressed in the ordinance.
Who does the judge report to?
He reports to the council, right? This, this Monday.
But I had heard, I, I proved it, that the city manager had, had given the mayor or the judge, uh, contract saying to report to her.
That was actually.
How true is that?
I think, uh, I think that was something that we had spoke to, we, we spoke about as a, as a, as a council to.
That was an agreement that we did not discuss.
That was an agreement that was prepared by your attorney, Chris Hug, but I gave it to the mayor, and it did not say report to the city mayor.
But I, I, I never discussed any of that issue, and, and actually, upon that.
It said to report to the city manager, it said to, it was something that new office prepared, I just, did I just put it out for the mayor, I did not.
But you requested.
But who requested?
No, I did not request it.
Who?
Who gave the directive?
I think it was the city manager.
I was not answering.
Based on your executive.
No, no, who, who told you to do this?
I, I don't know the answer to your question, to be frank.
You don't know?
Well, I don't, I don't know everything.
Did it come from City Hall, or did it come from?
It did come from City Hall, it wasn't my idea.
Okay. And that's what I'm saying, we're, we're going with, with something that's already in the charter, that we, that the municipal judge reports to us, and then all of a sudden, you want to throw a curveball to the judge and say, this, and this, and this, and I didn't see the contract, I don't even have the contract number.
I know, I'm not.
And, and I have not, not listened to you, or anything, talked about any contract, so that's why I'm saying, who directed you to this contract?
I'd be glad to find out.
It was a four-page agreement.
Yes, I know.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get, I just heard about it, no.
But we did not agree to let it go to the council, that's why, when I told Mr. Hug, I didn't know anything about it, then he said, well, we shouldn't even be doing it, because the council didn't know about it.
And I believe that the judge should report as many times as he has to, to the council, and that's, that's official.
But I'm thinking that, I'm listening to both sides.
Something like that, or so.
No, I'm. No, I mean, well.
You're changing the charter?
No, I'm not sure we're changing the charter.
There you are.
But this, this, maybe you didn't get a better pulse on actually what's happening with the municipal judge, if he's more reporting, or, you know, the other day, what's going on.
Yeah, but look at how much, how much reporting that we were already getting before, and look at how many warrants are outstanding.
First of all, as a council, we have to be more responsible and stay on top of it, if we're going to be responsible for it all day. When Sheila was there, I don't think anybody here ever checked on her, to see if things are being done or not being done, so really, we should weigh more sense.
Yeah, but, but we, I think that, that there still needs to be someone there.
Now we know, and we should make sure to be proactive and do the right thing.
Even if it's the city secretary, you know, I think it's, there still needs to be some type of supervisor.
If you're going against the charter, the charter's.
You just put that on the board, and let the board decide.
Then you can change.
What are the terms?
That they answer to council and all that, here you go.
We can also delegate someone to.
This has to go up to a lawyer, so it doesn't mean it's a bad idea, but.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the new judge a relative of anybody on the council, or anybody in City Hall?
Not mine, I don't know.
That's irrelevant, but.
It is not irrelevant, that's.
I don't believe he's related.
I believe, that would be ninety percent of the employees of the city of Florence.
If I like thirteen oh three, it should be shorter, that'd be the case.
The fix was already in place right now. Mr. Rosenberg, what is it that you suggested you needed to include?
I, I want to include a requirement that the judge makes a monthly report to the council, just like you do from the controller or the manager, so that the status of the cases can be seen, whether they're falling behind thirty days, or whether you're staying up for thirty days, and that includes the warrants, that includes your code processing, and that includes your traffic violation.
And who would, who would the, the judge be reporting to to say, I'm not going to be able to come in today?
Well, if he can't come in today, then he needs to, he needs to get his court to do it, or the prosecutor, but I'm going to expect that we have him here.
Because I, I know that was, that came up to, to counsel. It, it did come up in, with Sheila, it did come up to counsel to say, you know, she had to report to somebody to say, I'm taking it off, I'm going to be kicked when I'm sick.
Who was the city manager talking to? Well, what did the city manager talk?
You had, you had two of them scheduled, council meetings, I was here, the judge, I would be on that. And.
Will, will they get you to report to us like we have, you know, everybody has?
Right.
The numbers.
May I make a comment? Okay, as all the employees of the city, also the city, the judge, municipal judge, is also in our table, um, system. So in order for these judges to take their sick leave, their vacation, their personal time off, they need to follow the same requirements, whether it be these persons reports to the council, or reports to the city manager. We have a form for the employees that is filled out for whenever we take any of those days, and because our supervisor is the city manager, is signed by the city manager, I would like to see that happen with a municipal judge, where any of the councilmen sign for that timeout, so that way we can have documentation for audit purposes. Right now, we have, for Sheila, we have nothing.
Do we have the record, that's saved for the city manager?
Yes.
I've never seen anything, I've never heard anything, her taking a day off, or asking the council.
She does submit the forms, and she signs them.
You've never asked.
Honey, but in this case, it would be different, because they're part-time, although, and they have no benefits.
Yes.
No sick leave, no vacation.
There are no benefits.
The only thing that they would have to let us know is that they're going to be absent, or something like that.
And they're, they're actually treated as independent contractors.
And he didn't report to the council, say, I'm going to take a day off, and that's.
And it, and it was just a comment, so that way you know how important it is for, even if, if they report to you, for documentation to be done properly, so that way we have that for audit purposes.
I can recall to Judge Sheila, asking the city manager for a timeout, if you're in a different department, you know?
Yeah, because of, when I told her, she cannot sign.
Let me recommend this for tonight, and that is, we approved this, and we see how the next county judge is going to have, uh, a couple months of trial. Mr. Evans indicated that, uh, things may be changing a little bit, but he seemed particularly successful from yesterday. So I'm inclined to say, let's go with something, I'll lend it if you need to.
Can I ask one, one question on this one, on this matter?
Absolutely.
It says there shall be no additional compensation or employment benefits provided to the municipal judge, not specifically in the rate of hearing.
That's correct.
Does that mean that there are, are they excluded from the annual weekly?
Unless you provide one.
But it says here that they're excluded.
Well, I mean, you're the one that's going to include it.
We, we gotta do it, we're trying to.
No, you'd be the one providing that. My amendment.
Mary Ellen. Use your own phone.
Yes. In my opinion, I think we should have this done in due aspects, first of all, in what you're doing now, I think, is the basic structure for the position, you know, the, the timeframe, the salary, and the requirements to have the job performed. I think along with that, and this applies then on the individual, the job, we should have a work plan, that specifically then calls for what kind of performance, and how we can actually know at what point, that the, the job is being done or not done at all, and then be, be able to, to rate that individual, because some point in time, you're going to be looking at salary again. So to me, it's a, to the aspect, uh, I think, uh, action here, one, again, basically what you're doing now, and that can be done without, without the incumbent, and then one that applies to the incumbent specific, and again, a job that, that's there, whether it's filled or not, and that's what you're doing now. You know, it runs this amount of time, it has this kind of salary, you know, and so on and so on. Now, when you have a, 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 an incumbent there, then you have something that applies to the incumbent, that makes the requirement newer, you were talking about. You know, what, what constitutes doing the job satisfactorily, and so on and so on. See, to me, it's, it's, it's like a position and an incumbent. This is a position right here, the incumbent then gets from you, folks, you know, the requirements, and what it takes to be there, and, and then again, when that person is not performing, what you're doing. Thank you.
Is there any other citizens' comments?
One, Madam Mayor. The other thing in there I, I did hear is, uh, you talked about statutorily required, uh, training. Is there a timeline in which that will, does the statute address the timeline in which that has to be completed?
I think it has to be done within the first two weeks, and I think he's already subscribed to the sign-up.
Well, my, my point was, if the statute doesn't dictate when the training should occur, uh, the ordinance should.
The statute says, I, I think it's within the first two weeks, and I think he's already.
He's already registered.
He's already registered.
And she. Uh, there's one at the end of the month, that's in Austin, there's a one-day training that he's already signed up for, and then there's a training that happens in December, it only happens, and it's in December, he's registered for that, they have another one in June, and that's more of a five-day comprehensive training, regardless of scheduling for those dates as well.
There is one other thing, just for information to the council. In talking with the county attorney who's previously performed this function, uh, there has been an informal agreement among the JPs and our city, uh, judge, to provide magistrations, or be a weekend magistrate, and a lot of, on weekends, on Monday. That's something I didn't address here, and it's something I wasn't aware of until I visited with the county attorney about it. There's some other details that probably need to be engrafted in here. I'm not saying this is a complete product, but since in the past, it's evolved into formal, I'd like you to take this stuff tonight, with the idea that to come back and revisit it, and probably next time, two months from now, somewhere around the end of the year, after the judge has had a chance to get a seat, to come about. So your December council meeting is showing ahead of one meeting. Well, give him the member to check out for one more meeting, and then come back and schedule for the November, for December.
So what were your changes, all of your recommendations, for the changes to the, to the ordinance that's a.
My changes to the ordinance is.
That just put that at will?
Yeah, there's a part-time contractor serving at will, right there on the first line. Top paragraph. Captain has the part-time contractor, you see that, sir?
With no minimum hours.
No minimum hours.
Do you still want to put the, you know, and with enough time to take care of the.
Well, I'm, I'll offer to do that, let's just do that right now. Serving with sufficient time to be able to report to the council. Come in Monica, please.
Sufficient time?
To be able to report to the council, if his docket is current, when he makes his monthly report.
And then are you going to add the requirement the judge to make a monthly report also?
Yes. Right after that, the monthly report shall remain. It's going to have to be in person, because at least it's going to be for.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a schedule yet for the court, I know they just had one yesterday on the twenty-second, I know it's sometime in November, but I'm not quite sure about the date. So as soon as I get a calendar of their dates, then I can set up for the meeting, because of course, I'll have to set up after the court, but I don't have a complete schedule. I wouldn't say November, I have something on me, but I'm not quite sure.
That's, that's, I don't think so.
Yeah, so somewhere, that's why I had it taken in mind, but it's sometime November, so as soon as I get the schedule, uh, from the court, of when you're having the court, it'll be following, right, because you're not in court.
Anyway, we'll add this sentence, the real monthly report shall be filed with the council. Via clerk of the court, who is a deputy, under the charter, a deputy to the city secretary. Is provided in section.
So we're really adding some things, right, on each, okay, to make a monthly report to the council, first, and then the second, the part-time contractor is serving at will, and the third one?
Is that he will keep his docket current, and then he'll still reflect in the report. And then if you find it a problem, if he doesn't have enough time, or if he's not getting enough assistance, or you have any whatever problems, then you can address it.
Before now, I'm going to get me to catch up, right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
But right now, you're catching up in reports, you're not on the current, because you're still trying to catch up.
Are you still trying to catch up to the court?
How far back are you?
I can't tell you, I'm, I'm not part of the court staff, I'm the prosecutor.
He's taking what's given to him, and he prosecutes.
That's good.
Anyway, I think this is the start, and I think we should go with it.
Is there any other citizens' comments before we take over? May I have a motion?
Please, I move to accept ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash zero eighteen, and obviously, the ordinance first, an ordinance of the city of Fort Worth, Texas, under section thirty-three point oh four eight, of the city's code of ordinances, to establish a term for municipal judges of the city of Fort Worth, establishing a compensation schedule for the municipal judge, and establishing an effective date to include making a monthly report to the council. Keep, yeah, keep the docket current, and, and, and know that the part-time contractor is serving at will.
I have a motion by counsel, if you have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second, my counsel, I saw him in favor. On the post. Motion carries high view. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, now we're going to back down to item three C, consideration in action for proof evidence engineering proposal to prepare construction documents for advertising, advertising bids, opening, and subsequent award with respect to the materials we may. for advertising, advertising bids, opening, and subsequent award with respect to the repairs we made for the city center. Mr. Turk has actually made an interim package, and he has a letter dating September 4th in reference to the agenda. I believe he's requesting information from the 4A firm, in order to, in order to represent the specifications and what they are actually classified to. But I'll leave it to Tom to speak to that.
Okay. Council, Mayor, thank you for having me hear the statement. You have before you a proposed to do a, what I would call a program study on the city center. And basically, that scope of work involves us going over all of the assessment reports that were generated during the lawsuit. Attempting to prioritize all of the repairs that are needed and come up with a program. As you may know, there were about 2.6 million dollar foot of repairs identified. And as I understand, the budget for all those repairs is about a million dollars. So we have to begin to choose the highest priority repairs and put together a bid package for that. And we need to do some proof of thinking about what we do repair and what gets deferred to another contract. And that's essentially what this scope of work covers. We'll sit down with city staff, we'll sit down with the folks who use and operate the event center, and try to make sense of what the priorities are and put together a big package for it.
And is that amount correct, or is it 870 something thousand dollars worth?
Yeah. You can just estimate, round them in and out.
That's what I was told.
It is rounded up. So round it up, around about 800.
Because I don't want him thinking.
Whatever budget. You set?
Okay, now this dollar amount that you come up with, is this along with what's the damage that was done? Along with what now needs to be done? What that wasn't awarded? Are there additional things that need to be done? What you found out, what you have?
I don't know. I've received a lot of information from the attorneys. We have it in our files, but we have not yet begun to go through the information and determine what we have on the whole avenue, how serious it is.
He hasn't actually gone and got a site visit as a gap, because we wait for you to approve it.
That's what's in here.
You know, we talked to Burry Engineering, they're doing a lot of things in reference to your wasteland. The application and things that go back. The other company, and the other in place, the third company, the two others are approved, the three engineering firms, with a representative that was associated with this contact lead, but it's tied to this. So I'm recommending that you use InNess to do that. Allow him, his fee comes out of that money. So his fee comes out of that. He can go and start going on site, go through information, he's received some of it already, so he can have some kind of idea. But he has not got a site visit to assess anything in reference to that. He's waiting for you to give him the proof.
The fee is fifty thousand dollars.
Not too expensive.
Correct, it's an hourly. If we don't use all that money, we won't be built. But it's to do an initial assessment. Once we figure out what that program is, we'll come back to you with the actual fee to put the bid documents together, and then take it through construction.
We're all guilty, Thompson. You will use all the money.
Actually, that's not true. Many projects where we don't use the money.
I have a question.
Yes.
For picking?
I don't agree with you.
And then you took their, what, they picked three and then you picked one?
No. What happened, already on orders on file, is that the city, some time ago, have already approved of three engineers. Two city engineers, two different companies, you've already pre-approved. And so I visited with the three pre-approved engineering. One firm is already out of business, they no longer work. Burry Engineering is our other engineering, city-approved firm. InNess is the other city-approved firm.
Have you ever worked for Fuller's, by the way?
Yes.
Yes. He's actually the company that did our fire dear plan. Our fire dear plan. So that's why I suggested we do it, too. Other than that, I didn't want to have to go out and qualify qualifications, and do that, and that, and what have to spend the time and do that. And the familiarity with the city of Fort Worth, which I thought would be a great option. So that's why we got, so now we're only down to two engineering firms, the two have actually already pre-approved.
And what was given to us, the money, specifies certain repairs.
Yes.
Are we being held to those repairs, or would you be evaluating and putting on priority?
We will take that whole list of repairs, and we'll do our best to prioritize what needs to be done and what needs to be first. Based on what I've seen, pretty limited information, but obviously there are leaks, and that's causing a lot of problems. That's a very high priority. I think the HVAC system is a very high priority. But if you add those two together, it exceeds 875,000. So we're going to have to break some of that further down and decide to do some things and not do others. So there's some thought and some prudence that needs to be made.
Yeah, and because we've been having some large issues for some time, there's black mold, there's other things going on in that building that we have to address, and some paintings, and floor things that haven't been properly maintained before, because the roof is leaking, and it's actually stripping maintenance before. So we're hoping to do those kind of things. At the last city council meetings, I said we'll prioritize those for the 875. And we may happen to come back and talk about a second phase, that we may have to use, hopefully, attorneys working on hotel motel tax to fix up the city itself for phase two. So this is only going to be phase one, because we know that they're not going to be able to make all of the repairs. We need to prioritize those and to make sure we're doing the best of our ability.
Madam Mayor, remember to come. I remind one thing that Mr. Turk has said. He's going to do the proper assessment, proper prioritization. There's still going to have to be bid documents built. And those bid documents, because of the size of the bid, have to go out through public bid. They need to be built in a user-friendly way, so you get some good bids. But there's another step that we have to do.
Thank you for explaining that. So I was thinking that, and we know that there were repairs that were going to exceed what we already have, why do we need to stay?
We need somebody to assess what we need to do.
Assessing for our.
And make interpretation of what you actually come up with in the lawsuit itself.
Just, if I can ask, are the repairs because of normal wear and tear or improper installation?
The repairs are, right now, in reference to the lawsuit, they sued the contractor. Some things were put in wrong, some things were not paid apparently, so it's not necessarily, it's a new building. So in essence, it's actually construction-driven.
So all of it is because of what the contractor did?
The contractor.
Or didn't do?
The contractor and the architect itself, and some of the design issues as well. So it was mostly a design and other things that couldn't have been avoided, that happened in the construction process. And so we're hoping that we can make some type of repair this time.
Any questions from the citizens? Down there? Any questions?
Just a quick question. I mean, you mentioned that if the roof leaks, and then there's age factor, but then there's not enough money to fix both of those things. So where are we going to prioritize? Fixing the roof or the age mark?
Well, we may have to look at the roof and the HVAC and see if we can pull some of those, some items of work out of those two to get it down to about 875,000. That's my best guess.
In other words, just patch the roof instead of fixing it?
Look, what.
No, I'm not, I'm not just asking.
I don't know the answer to your question, because I haven't seen this, I haven't looked at it yet. But that's the whole point of why we're doing this, so that if and when we make decisions like that, that we know it's proved, that we can arbitrarily say we're going to do this or not.
If what the cost fee is to pay you to give us an assessment, rather than to jump in at 15,000 dollars, you give me assessment on 20,000 dollars that needs to be fixed, you actually go out there and look at the facility again, give an assessment?
Well, that would be a duplicate work that's already been done by expert witnesses that were part of the litigation. I'm just taking that information, collecting it, assessing it, and then talking to the people who are using and operating the facility, and then making the final decision of what we do for the 875,000. I don't intend to reassess the actual repairs they were called for. Somebody's already done that work, I'm not redoing that. I'm simply taking all this information, and I'm assessing and prioritizing what has to be done as a collective repair of the building, which nobody has really done.
But you're also getting all the assessment, which is right?
Well, that is part two of what we're doing. And once we have figured out what the program is, we'll come back to you and say, this is what it costs to put together the construction package, and then take it through construction.
So part two, sorry, we're just going to.
That's correct.
To where y'all would actually review the bids and so forth, the other scope of work?
We would actually put, we would actually design the repairs, put together the construction package, send it out for bid, and then take it through construction. That's part two of what we're going to do for you. And since we don't know what the program looks like, we really can't give you a fair description.
Yeah, a lot of things you'll be assessing will be the testimony that was received in the lawsuit from the experts that the 4A hired in reference to the lawsuit state. This is what's wrong, this is what should have been done. The HVAC problem that we're having now, that the mudwork keeps getting wet, and we keep having to replace that. About a few, about $800,000 keeps going out. And so we need to be able to address those issues. If you haven't been able to go through all that, of what's causing us to get the water to hit that mudwork, is the condensation, or where it's coming from in the roof, we don't quite know.
If you had a 2.6 million dollar budget to do all the repairs, this would be totally unnecessary, because we would just move forward with our repairs. But you've only got 875,000. So you've got to make a decision about what we do now, and what gets deferred later, to when more funding is available. And that's an important decision. Because if we make the wrong decision now, we could be causing more problems at your building, and you surely don't need that.
You could be back here a year from now.
Yeah.
So what keeps us from hiring a reliable contractor to do the same thing and just pay him to do the job, and not pay for another assessment, like you said, right now?
You still need to have that scope of work to tell them what to do.
But you said that it was already done.
No, the scope hasn't been defined the problem.
Not to, not broken down, just on our side, you know, into the nitty-gritty. It was told as a whole, you got a hole in your head.
Can I find, remember when you're doing a lawsuit, there's a deposition from you. You're the expert, you're the bad guys. Johnny's the expert, you're the guys. And you've got to take those two depositions and compare them, and determine how much of your testimony is valid, how much of his testimony is valid. Look at what those exhibits show, make an analysis, and then get your you-know-what out there on the premises and inspect it, and figure out this is yes, this is yes, this is yes, this is no, this is no. But there's nothing uglier in the whole world than a lawyer's file box, where you've got to go through those depositions and figure out what part of that's true and what part of that's not true. And that's what they're having to do as professionals, which is to assess the portion that needs to be done that's really valid.
For example, on the roof. There's going to be two reports. There's going to be one from your side and from the other side. And those two reports are not going to say the same thing. And so I've got to look at both those reports and decide which is the right way to go. And not only do I have to do it for the roof, but I have to do it for the HVAC, and mowers, and everything else, and decide this is the way to go. And that's what that 15,000 dollars is for.
Well, and you've got the other problem, which is, did they really get adequately paid for the roof? Because when they compromised it to settle it, if they did, they determined which items are left out of that payment schedule. And I'm assuming these two big items are in there. But you're going to have to determine whether there's enough money in there ready to do the two big items.
I'm here, and you know, because I'm up here. Right? I'd like to add something. In the breakdown that the lawyers gave us, they, in the very inception, is the roof along with 600,000 dollars. But that's the Cadillac. Mr. Turk. Mm-hmm. And so you don't have to choose all the, you know, you didn't know, we just want to get a functional roof, you know? So we don't have to get all that fancy dancy and strip up everything, you know? Right? So that's what I'm gathering, hopefully, that he's going to show us. This has to be done, this over here is just extra stuff.
We want a good repair.
And then you'll have to give instructions to, and specifications to the contractor as to how to repair the roof. Is it a total strip? Is it a partial strip? How many layers are put in? Those kind of things, you'll have to specify, so that he can get in consideration even.
Yes, of course.
If your work monitor and verify it's done, check off, and they all get the sign off, and give verification that the work is satisfied. And then hopefully, we give some warranties. And we concern that going forward, we need to have warranties, because the roof is up there now, we haven't a warranty. Because we settled, it's done. Their hands are off. And so this new contractor will have to give us some type of warranty on the roof, and so we need to make sure that we do it, if we have to future repair, same thing with HVAC. So all the warrants are void now, so we need to be able to put things in place, we have to recover them, so that we, you know? I don't know if we get them here, but we need to get some type of warranty on the roof.
Can I add something else? Because we've said something that irritated me. Then the 4A board, you know, like we just kind of quit, we just said, you know, well, we'll just take that. We'll take that 879,000 dollars, you know, call it a day. Well, if we had kept going on and on and on, because lawyers already paid so much, that we said, you know, we better hold our cards here, because now we're just going to start eating it into that 879,000 dollars, you know? That's why we made that call.
Well, I appreciate that.
Okay, anyone else before we take? Take the giving time and the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve a motion to reduce the public's prepared expressiveness adopted for advertising for public bids, opening and subsequent award with respect to the newly repaired and dedicated city center.
I have a motion by councilman Castillo, who has a second.
One second.
Second by councilman Earl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries forward. Okay, now it's item 3D. Consideration in action for approved eminent engineering recommendations for class A water tank bid.
Yes, in the package you have an email from Tom himself, and we, that, and an email also from the attorney from the same office, and we also sent two recommendations to the website.
As you know, we prepared, we designed for a new 80,000 gallon tank on the site, wellsite. And that was the base bid. And then we had an often bidding to go in there and replace the roof on the existing, the old, in case the base bid was low or there was no funding available. We took bids on October 7th. We got a base bid from only one bidder for approximately 147,000 dollars. And it was a 62,000 dollar pump in the roof for the roof of those. The 147,000 dollar base bid is about 31,000 dollars over the budget. The budget for construction is about 125,000. The total budget for the project is about 156,000. We have the 31 for engineering and construction. That makes the base bid about 17% over the budget, and we're recommending that, you know, we have to reject it. Basically, we had only one bidder. There just wasn't a competitive environment of any effecting, and it showed in the price. So we're recommending that the bid be rejected.
Keep everybody honest.
Okay, so we draft a bid.
The next step is turn the steps back and reassess what we do at that site. We have some new information on the existing tank that suggests we shouldn't put any more money into that tank, that asset. And that we should probably build bigger tanks than the 8,000 gallon reservoir for today.
And then it goes to that one.
Pardon?
What is, how do we get that conclusion?
There was an inspection report that was provided.
There was an inspection report that was provided to us a couple of weeks ago. And when we reviewed that report, the assumptions we made about the condition of the inside of the tank were not correct. And they say it's in worse shape than we.
How much, how many gallons is running out?
It's an eighty thousand, eighty thousand gallons. We'll make it with another eighty thousand gallons. And we were hoping that over time we would be able to fix the existing tanks. And we would have two tanks of eighty thousand gallons, a hundred and sixty thousand total. But I, I do not think that the city of Forestville should put any more money into the existing tank. It's only leaving the eighty thousand gallon tank, assuming we go a bit near. And as you know, the city's growing, particularly the Riverbend subdivision, which is fed off of that site. So I think it's, I think it's proven for the city to kind of step back and consider building our.
How worse is it? How bad?
This is the one we're talking about?
That's the report we're talking about. The report was disturbing to me.
How disturbing?
Disturbing, then that's for later.
Well, I think it's going to be, that on top, which I have, it's pretty good. It's pretty good. It's pretty good.
The tank is about eight years old. The life of a tank is, if you report, it could be about twenty years. And it needs to be taken out, so is yours.
And there's, there's a couple of reasons why we think it is in the condition that it is. One is that you have a very high sulfuric water. There is a, there is a narration chamber up on a stand that, that operates. And we don't know much about it, other than it's probably not operating at the level that at least we don't know why. We don't know much about it. But if it was operating properly, you wouldn't have all that, all that sulfuric water. And that, that's what's kind of eating at your tank. And then I have no idea.